Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting of April 10, 2012. We have been in closed session since 6:30 for the purposes of collective negotiations and employment of employee. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is student recognition, and we've asked Mr. Collins to help us with that. Do you have a preamble, Mr. Prunell?
Yeah. Excuse me if I could. I'd like to introduce Jake Martin, who is the English Department Chair, and also the speech team coach. Mr. Martin, welcome, and it's our privilege to have you this evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. It's my honor and privilege to get the chance to speak about Sarah King and the York Speech Team. Just to give a little bit of background, I just want to share sort of what speech team is, because many people don't really understand what that is, and also a little bit about Sarah's event. The speech team is comprised of a variety of different events. I liken it to, similar to a track team or a gymnastics team, where students are sort of competing in one given event over the course of a season, and Sarah's event happened to be original oratory. Original oratory asks students to pick a relevant or engaging topic and to write their own original eight-minute persuasive speech on it using sources and research and so on. This is Sarah's second year on the team and her first in original oratory, and Sarah's piece over the course of the season was probably a work in progress. She was, she's definitely somebody who, I think, always pushes herself to do as well as she can, and she was never happy with how she was doing early on. She rewrote her piece multiple times over the course of the season, eventually did so well that she took second at both regionals and sectionals, and then at the state tournament, which is a two-day affair, she, in round one, actually struggled a little bit. There's actually a time limit they have for these speeches that you give in state. 8:30 is how, is where they cap you at, and Sarah went a little bit over time, and I told her that, you know, that evening after she performed, I said, "You went a little bit over," and they drop your rank as a result of that. Sarah, I mean, obviously very concerned, again revised her piece at state. Round two the next day, performed flawlessly, better than I've ever seen her perform before in my entire, you know, coaching experience with her, and then qualified for the final round, where she was, again, flawless, and was good enough to become the state champion in original oratory, York's first-ever state speech champion, which is pretty impressive. And I think that Sarah exemplifies the team as a whole this year. I think that we have such talent among our seniors to our freshmen, and I think one of the greatest compliments that I was paid was by a coach from a neighboring school. There's a lot of powerhouse speech schools in our area, and unfortunately, York has never been sort of put into that class, but this coach from this neighboring school said, "You know, I don't like to see York at our tournaments anymore, because it means we're not going to do as well as we usually do." And I think that's, you know, when you can make other people afraid, that's really a good sign of success. But no, in all seriousness, I mean, this is just a testament to the students that we have on speech, who really are such incredible talents, and I think Sarah is just a perfect example of that. So it's my privilege to introduce and call up here Sarah King.
Mrs. D'Erone was kind enough to ask if I would volunteer and to congratulate Sarah, and I'm thrilled to do it, because I myself am an alumni, even though you wouldn't know it right now, of the York Speech Team. I competed in two events, and I never saw a state tournament. But to give you a level, just the idea of the level of competition that Sarah was up against, there were 77 teams at the IHSA State Speech Tournament, and each speaking event featured between 18 and 20 students. So there's a total of 14 events, and a few years ago I could probably rattle them off, but now there's not a chance. And schools brought anywhere from 1 to 40 students who won, who placed at regionals and qualified for the state tournament. The judges are comprised of other high school speech team coaches from various schools. Coaches were asked to judge events for which their students didn't qualify. While students compete in two preliminary rounds and one final round for those who qualify, only one state champion is awarded in each event. And just the fact that this is the very first time York has won the, an event in the state speech championship kind of chokes me up. I think it's fabulous. You run a great program. You're an honor to York High School.
Thank you.
And now I have a proclamation to read. Whereas 10 members of the York Community High School Speech Team qualified in three categories by their top performances, performances at the sectional contest held in February and thus advanced the Illinois High School State Speech Finals, and whereas the 2011-2012 State Speech Finals were held in Peoria on February 18th, required the participants to perform in two preliminary rounds over two days. With the top six students in each qualifying, each qualifying for finals, and whereas York Community High School senior Sarah King qualified for finals in the original oratory event by writing her own persuasive speech on a current and relevant topic, delivered from memory within a prescribed time limit, and whereas Sarah was named the IHSA State Champion, becoming the first-ever state speech champion in the history of York High School. And whereas inter-scholastic activities enrich the educational experience of students by developing the necessary speaking and performing skills that will be a great asset in the coming years, and whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to Sarah King, her parents, and teachers for this outstanding accomplishment. And if I can just add one more thing. Speech is a lifelong skill. I encourage every student at York High School to get as much experience in speaking in front of audiences by joining the speech team or however else they can do it, because it truly is a lifelong skill, and Sarah, who knows, 40 years from now, you might find it a useful skill to run for the school board. Congratulations again.
We have one other announcement, Mr. Prunell.
Yeah, we just received this not too long ago, so I thought I'd share with the board and the public this evening. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation Program has recently determined which of the 16,000 semifinalists named in September of 2011 have met all the requirements to advance to finalist standing in the competition for national merit. All finalists will be considered from National Merit Scholars to be offered in 2012. We already honored all of our semifinalists, but I'm proud to announce tonight that five York seniors have been named as finalists for national merit, and they are Margaret Homer, Tessa Crowell, Ryan McDonough, Margaret Patchett, and Harry Strebar. So congratulations to those five students. They will move on. They were also honored recently at York High School along with Illinois State Scholars and J. Kyle Braid Leaders Recognition, and again, they will be notified shortly of the selection of the 8,400, the actual finalists. So having five from one high school is really an outstanding achievement. So congratulations to those students, and the teachers and the parents who are involved in the journey for those students. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comments. Five people have indicated their desire to address the board this evening. I will call you by name. Please come to the podium. Be sure you turn on the mic. State your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. I should tell you that it is not the practice of the board to respond to public comments, but that I assure you, we are listening carefully. The first speaker is Linda Frech, followed by Keely Hicks.
My name is Linda Frech. I have lived at 226 Columbia Avenue for almost 40 years. My children and foster children have attended your schools. I have been a member of District 205 staff for 23 years at Churchville Middle School as a library assistant. Last year, I was an active member of the EPT Library Committee. The position of library assistant on any level, elementary, middle school, or high school, is a multifaceted one. On the middle school level, there are two very important components: assistance to students and teachers, and behind-the-scenes secretarial and maintenance work. We check books in and out, help students and teachers locate materials, discuss books, pull materials for curricular projects, manage the circulation desk, and much, much more. Every day, we keep your children's school library open during the entire academic day. When not serving our students and teachers, we have numerous behind-the-scenes activities, responsibilities. We check books in, shell, straighten, repair books, research books and authors, research professional journals like School Library Journal, preview and process new materials, maintain files, and generate reports. We oversee the look and the condition of the entire library collection. This position is not just an aide to the librarian, but to the entire school community. If assistants are removed from the high school and middle school libraries, this will force librarians to assume these duties to keep the libraries running. This will take away time to professionally collaborate with teachers and help create rich activities for our students and schools. At Churchville, for the past seven years, our library has coordinated many school-wide activities. These include our all-school read, our participation as an official Cottles School, and our yearly major literary event with our kids. We have hosted renowned authors Roland Smith and Gordon Korman. Projects like these may be eliminated because our librarians will be performing the assistant's clerical duties for a majority of their day. Bryan and Churchville have students who reside in unincorporated areas where the families must pay a fee to use the Elmhurst Public Library. These families may not have the money to spare making the school library the only free library available. The middle school assistants have worked in our schools for numerous years. We know our jobs. The PSRP contract states that we will be offered other positions, so the amount quoted in the budget will not be reduced by moving us to other positions, but by the difference of a new employee coming in at $11.26 per hour, or 65% of the proposed $90,000 savings. The middle school assistants cordially, may I finish? Cordially invite the administration and the Board of Education to come and chat with us and see what our jobs entail in order to make an educated decision about the future of our libraries. This decision will greatly impact the education of our students and academic support for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keely Hicks. Looks like followed by Chrissy O'Connor and Carrie Francic.
Yep. Yeah, we're all talking about the same topic, so I'll just start.
Go ahead.
To make it easy. I'm Keely Hicks. I'm a senior at York High School, and I'm in AP French. Recently, one of the French teachers at our school had to take and saw them leave a absence, and they combined the AP French class and the French 4H class. This was only because AP French has a class size of 11, and it was the easiest option for them to do. We think that it is hurting us, and we're never going to be prepared for the AP test coming next month. You would never combine a pre-calc honors class and an AP calc class. It would just not happen. It wouldn't work, and it's not working for French either. We're not getting the adequate attention from our teacher. She has to try to spend her time between 4H and AP, and we feel we're not going to be prepared. We have to take our tests with the department chair, Dr. Buccielli, who also does not speak French, so we can't ask her questions, and it's harder for us to learn French. And when I don't do well on the AP French test next month, who's going to pay for me to take more French courses in college? I'm using this class to get the credit, and I put many, I put many hard work into this class, and what, for nothing? Because they can't hire us up. Also, there's a conflict between senior exams and AP exams. Our schedules conflict, and because my counselor cannot work out my schedule, they are now sending it to the assistant principal to work out. It's making me more stressed out, and I don't need this added stress at the end of my senior year. Why don't we just not have finals? I've already been accepted to college. I'm taking three AP exams next year, next, excuse me, next month, and I don't really need the added stress of senior finals and trying to work out a schedule to do those.
My name is Chrissy O'Connor. I'm in the same class. I'm a senior. And I'd also like to bring up that while we only have a class of 11, this is also harming the class of 4H as well. In our class today, for example, they had to listen to our listening exercises, which they didn't understand, and they're not at the level four, and it wasted half of their period. I have several friends in the class, and they, they talk to me, saying that they're not getting the attention they also need. They cut their last unit short by two weeks. They're doing a unit now that they don't need. They're doing time-wasting activities, because my teacher cannot split her time between both classes. So now this is not just affecting our class of 11 people, it's also affecting their class of 35. And I'm paying $80 for this exam, but if I don't get a good enough grade, I'll be paying thousands of dollars for it in college. And I feel that because I go to this school, my teacher should be supplied to me, and I should be getting her full attention, especially this close to the AP exam. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Francis, and I'd like to point out that we're not blaming the teacher. She has a ton of stress with this. She has to work out, coordinate what she's going to teach them, because she still has to teach them what they have to learn, because they're still learning units, and they're still, they have to take a final, they have tests to do, and we have our AP test. So we all have tests, and she has responsibility to teach both of us. It just doesn't work out, because our curriculum doesn't match up. So not only is it affecting our class, 4H, it's also affecting the teacher, giving her unnecessary stress, because, because before, she was only teaching two classes, because she has young children. Now she's teaching, I don't know how many more, but she's teaching a lot more classes, not to mention she's teaching two classes at the same time, and it's, doesn't work out for any of us. So we've, we have thought of the proposal that potentially hiring a sub to watch the class, like, switch off, like, one class would be doing some silent work in one room with a teacher watching them, who doesn't have to speak French, and then the other class would have Madame Grandolfo, our French teacher, to help learn the nuances of grammar to prepare both classes for their French tests coming up. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Patty Hicks.
Hi, I'm Patty Hicks. My daughter Keely was the first one that spoke, and speaking as a parent to not have been informed that I, I didn't need to be informed what the emergency was, but I would have liked, as a parent, to have been informed that my daughter's class of 11 was being merged with another class of over 20, with one teacher who is now responsible for two separate curriculums this close to the AP test. I did speak with Mr. Corvino, and I spoke with the department chair, and I know that they feel that this is the only option, that they have explored looking for qualified French substitutes, and they have been unable to find one. The idea that this is an acceptable arrangement, as my daughter pointed out, you would never do this in AP Calc, BC, or AB. I believe it's because it's considered a foreign language, and it's sort of the bald-headed stepchild, that you're able to merge the two classes together. So that's a concern. The other is, in terms of the administration at the high school and for the board, what other subject areas do you not have ample substitutes? The idea that, that French is so specialized that there is no sub to call on, what other subjects are there out there? What if something happened to Mr. Schoenberg, the only teacher right now teaching AP Calc, BC? What would happen to those students? Would you merge them with the BC? So there are a lot of what would be considered specialized and unique courses at York, which is one of the benefits of paying the taxes and sending two children through the schools. So I would suggest perhaps it's pertinent to review your sub list and see how deep it is in the event you have another emergency where a teacher is going to be absent for a certain amount of time, so that you're able to give the attention to the students and to the teachers to provide the correct climate for learning. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments this evening. If board members have no objection, I'd like to alter the order of the agenda this evening and take two of our items out of closed session and deal with them now, since there are interested parties in the audience. If we could please, Ms. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Linda Farrenbacher as the new principal at Jefferson Elementary School, effective July 1, 2012.
It's been moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins, to approve the appointment of Ms. Linda Farrenbacher as principal at Jefferson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hirsch.
We had just a few moments during the end of our closed session to meet Mrs. Farrenbacher. I'm trying to say it the right way. We have Mrs. Fanon Steele is being replaced with Mrs. Farrenbacher. This is really a tongue-twister test for board members. But welcome to Elmhurst. Welcome to Jefferson Elementary. I think we're very lucky to have you. We have a great set of families that are at Jefferson that are going to be very anxious to meet you and get to know you well. We think we have a great district. We think we have really good things going on in our district, and we're excited to add you to the team. So welcome.
Mr. Collins.
In closed session, I said to Mrs. Farrenbacher that she has a very, very tough act to follow. And within just a few minutes, she managed to prove to me that she's up to the task. But we will miss Mrs. Fanon Steele a great deal in the district.
Yes, we had all of seven minutes with our new principal, and she managed to have us all laughing and comfortable, and I think she'll be a great addition to District 205. The motion on the floor is to approve her appointment to Jefferson School. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. The next item that we'd like to do now, before we go on with the rest of our agenda, is to approve the agreement for, between the teachers' union and the school board. Is there a motion? Ms. Hirsch.
I want to make sure I have the right one. I move that the Board of Education approve a negotiated agreement for the period from July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2015, between Elementary Community School District 205 and Elmhurst Teachers Council Local 571 American Federation of Teachers.
Is there a second? Seconded, move by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Ms. Ebner, to approve the negotiated agreement between the Elmhurst Teachers Council and the Elmhurst Community School District 205. Mr. Prunell, did you have some comments?
Yeah, well, first of all, let me thank all of the parties involved in what was a very long negotiation process. Obviously, these economic times make it very, very difficult to negotiate any contracts with our employees. As I've said before, this is not a reflection of the worth of our employees, the worth of our teachers. They certainly deserve everything that we could possibly provide them. However, in these difficult economic times, it's been very, very difficult to do that. But I want to credit both negotiating teams for sticking with it. We got to the 11th hour, but we were able to come to an agreement that I think is going to serve the district well, serve the teachers well in these very difficult economic times. Hopefully, we can minimize the amount of reductions in force that we're facing. Unfortunately, we have some of that this evening, but I'm hoping in the long term, this will go over the four years of the agreement to minimize those reductions, retain the excellence of programs and services for Elmhurst, and really start a real partnership with the Teachers Association and with the school district. I'd like to turn this portion over just briefly to Mr. Hillman. He was the chief negotiator for the board, and I've asked him to just briefly give highlights of the new tentative contract that the board is considering this evening. Mr. Hillman.
Thank you, Mr. Prunell. The tentative agreement that is before the board for approval has several changes from the previous contract. Besides being a four-year agreement as opposed to a three-year agreement, the major impactful changes are as follows. The collaborative leadership group, named the District Leadership Team, has been restructured to increase the number of teacher leaders on the team. The number of teacher workdays has increased from 181 days to 182 days, with the extra day of work resulting in increased parent-teacher conference time. Professional expectations for teacher participation at events outside of school, outside of the school day, are increased, with teachers attending three events not to exceed seven hours in total length. The workday was altered at all three levels to increase teacher availability for professional collaboration. The student day at the elementary level has been lengthened by up to 15 minutes to increase the amount of direct instructional time for students. Language has been addressed to provide greater clarity on the supervision assignments at the high school. The middle school teacher support period has been tied to student achievement, with teachers needing to set measurable student goals to improve student performance. The evaluation language has been rewritten to ensure compliance with the mandate set forth in Senate Bill 7. Access to new teachers prior to the start of, start of the school year was increased. Personal day restrictions were removed, except for professional development days. The tuition reimbursement plan was restructured so that all teachers are reimbursed at the same rate. The course approval plan was restructured to ensure that coursework taken for reimbursement or for lane change movement reflects the needs of the district. The salary plus program was tied to the teacher evaluation system. Retirement incentive was also looked at. Teachers must choose between receiving four years of 6% increases or five years of health insurance reimbursement once they retire. In the past, they were eligible for both. Additionally, if the state of Illinois requires that school districts increase their contribution to the teacher retirement system, the 6% retirement incentive becomes frozen, with no new teachers entering the program, and teachers already in the program will not be eligible for future 6% pay increases. Teacher salaries. For the 2011-2012 school year, this year, teachers will not receive step, and there is no new money added to the base rate of pay from the 2010-2011 school year. For this year, teachers who earned a lane change will be received, will be credited with lane movement for the second half of the school year. For the 2012-2013, and the 2013 and 2014 school year, no step will be given, as was the case... For the 2012-2013 and the 2013 and 2014 school year, no step will be given as was the case in 2011-2012. 2014-2015 school year, the last year of the contract, teachers will be able to move one For the 2012 and 2013 school year, the second year of the contract, the base increase will be tied to the Consumer Price Index for December 2010. The base will increase by 50% of the 2010 CPI. The CPI for December 2010 was 1.5%. Therefore, for the 2012-2013 school year, the base will increase by 0.75%. For the 2013-2014 school year, base will again be tied to the CPI, specifically the December 2011 CPI. The December 2011 CPI was 3.0%. With using 50% of the CPI, the base will increase by 1.5%. And finally, for the 2014-2015 school year, there will be no increase to the base and has been stated previously, teachers will be able to move one step for this particular school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. I see what took 18 months. Before I open it up to discussion from the board, I just want to express our thank you, Board of Education's thank you, to both negotiating teams for all of the work they put into coming to this agreement. It was a long 18 months for all of us. The people who were still left standing on our team turned out to be Mr. Prunow, Mr. Welton, Mr. Johns, Mr. Hillman, our own board member Jim Collins, and a former board member who, for reasons only known to herself, was hanging in there with us, Marta Davey, the entire time on the negotiating team. We thank you all, the entire board thanks you for your dedication and your perseverance. I'd also like to thank all of the teachers who, since last July, came to work every day, able to enter their classrooms with only one thought, and that was to educate our children in spite of all the uncertainty. We, as a board and as an administration, appreciate that. I'd like to thank as well the parents and the community for having the patience to bear with us for all of this. I think it's a fair contract. It's a contract which nobody is really, really happy with, which I guess makes it a good contract. Is there any discussion from the board before we take a vote? Mr. Bloom.
This was a very difficult vote for me and I'm going to lead this to make sure I don't say something the wrong way here. I appreciate the changes that both sides have agreed to with respect to work rules that have made significant progress in enhancing student learning. My issues are purely on the financial side. Let me begin by stating that my vote on the contract is primarily driven by a desire to reach an agreement which balances the interests of all constituents, including teachers, parents, students, and taxpayers in this difficult economic environment. It is in no way intended to communicate a lack of respect for the dedicated teachers of District 205. We are fortunate that great teachers in our district pursue their vocation not based on requirements of a contract but in a willingness to go above and beyond to ensure every student gets the best education possible. For these teachers, I truly wish we had greater resources and options to reward them for the true value they create. Unfortunately, the current economic environment has left the district with a $1 million shortfall in excess of $1 million shortfall for next year and projected deficits beyond. There is no $27 million surplus, but rather a checking account which is dangerously close to negative by the end of the fiscal year, and increasing unfunded mandates from a state which doesn't pay its bills. To maintain a balanced budget, we are forced to pursue very painful measures impacting the richness of District 205 education that our community values, including teacher layoffs resulting in increased class sizes, fewer high school electives, diminished music and foreign language offerings, and reduced library services. We are also struggling to find funds to make needed investments in our buildings and more importantly, our people, as current trends in education and legislation, including Senate Bill 7, have placed an increased emphasis on human resource growth and development and technology enhancements in support of both student learning and performance management. To be a great district requires these types of long-term investments in our future and underfunding over the last few years is a cause for concern. It is from within this context that we approach current contract negotiations, attempting to make progress towards sustainable, long-term financial structure which balances the sacrifices of our teachers, students, parents, and taxpayers. While this contract makes progress in many areas, and I commend the team for their efforts, there are key elements where I believe we came up short. Tying labor costs to revenues. As you know, almost 85% of our revenues are from local property taxes which are tied to an increase in the Consumer Price Index. While the team made significant progress in linking raises during the first three years of this contract to CPI, the fourth year reverts to the old structure of an automatic raise of over $850,000 with no link to growth in our revenues, thereby increasing risk of additional painful cuts to balance our budget should revenues come up short. Elimination of retirement salary spiking. Past contracts have included a provision that allow for a teacher to declare his or her intention to retire and then provides for an automatic raises of 6% per year over the next four years in order to increase the salary on which his or her retirement benefits are based. As a taxpayer, I find this practice irresponsible, particularly in a situation where the teacher's retirement fund already has a deficit of over $43 billion. Our negotiations attempted to end this practice, and while this contract has a provision to end spiking should the state shift the pension obligation from the Illinois income taxpayer to the district property taxpayer. Maintaining this provision in the current contract has significant potential to cost the district over $750,000 over the term of this contract regardless of legislative outcome. Third piece, tying salary plus to performance. Salary plus is a program by which teachers at the top of our salary schedule are able to earn up to an additional $6,000 per year upon taking additional coursework. We are the only comparable unit district providing this benefit which is projected to cost the district in excess of $1.2 million over the term of this contract. Our negotiations attempted to link this unique benefit to teacher performance, but the ultimate agreement significantly waters down this link. I believe changes in these provisions could have provided significant resources to retain teachers and staff in a difficult budget environment.
Mr. Collins.
I apologize in advance for saying some things that have already been said this evening, but no one on this board is happier than I am that this negotiation process is over. As the only current sitting board member left on the negotiating team, after about 18 months, well over 400 hours spanning two administrations and a school board election, I'm glad this has come to an end. I would again like to reiterate Mrs. Derone's comments, thanking our teachers for their professionalism of working this long without a contract in place. It's truly a testament to their dedication to the students of our district. And also, I'd like to reiterate the special thanks to Marta Davey, who stuck with us and volunteered hundreds of hours of her own time even after she chose not to run for the school board again. Marta agreed to continue to volunteer her time and serve on the negotiation team for an additional 11 months after her elected term on the school board was finished. Thank you, Marta. And to reiterate also what Mr. Hillman said in an abbreviated format, we've achieved quite a bit in this contract for our taxpayers and especially for our students. The teachers team agreed to increase the amount of instruction time in our elementary schools by 15 minutes per day, which brings us up to the state average in elementary instructional minutes in math, science, English, reading, and social studies. Thank you. We've added an additional day to the school year so we can accommodate more parent-teacher conferences without incurring additional compensation costs and also allow our teachers to prepare for the beginning of the school year, something that was not included in last year's schedule but will again be included in this year's. We've agreed to, as Mr. Hillman said, teacher attendance at evening events without additional compensation. At the high school, we've agreed to a schedule to allow and encourage more effective teacher collaboration meetings that reflect the practices of other higher-performing school districts. In our middle schools, we've agreed to have teachers help our students that need more help and attention in their academic work for one additional period every day. Hopefully, this is a big step to achieve our goal that all of our students will read at grade level by the end of middle school and in turn, a step toward eliminating the cohort program in the high school because it simply won't be needed anymore. For the majority of this contract, we have tied wages to the district's revenues which are governed by the Consumer Price Index. We have dedicated and committed teachers in this district who I hold in the highest regard. Please understand that to all of our teachers that these raises are not an indication of our respect nor are they an indication of our regard for you. Simply put, these raises are all we can afford. We entered into these negotiations with a contract that compensates Elmhurst teachers better than any other group of unit district teachers in DuPage County. And we have ended this negotiation with a contract that compensates our teachers better than any other unit district teachers in DuPage County. Our children and our community will benefit from these changes in the contract. However, there is one part of this contract that troubles me greatly. We offer two programs to increase the salary and therefore the pensions of a small subset of our teachers who are already our highest-paid teachers, the majority of them who are nearing the end of their careers. The first program is, as Mr. Bloom mentioned, salary plus. As he mentioned, a teacher at the top of the pay scale making $104,000 can take up to seven additional three-credit-hour courses and increase their total pay to $110,000 per year. The second program, which is entitled the Retirement Incentive Program, allows a teacher to declare their intent to retire four years in advance and therefore receive four consecutive 6% raises which increase the end-of-career teacher's salary by a compounded 26% over the course of those four years. These salaries are used to compute a final pension benefit. A true retirement incentive program should only be offered for a limited amount of time to truly provide an incentive for teachers to retire. A retirement incentive program that is offered every year in perpetuity is not an incentive plan at all. It should be renamed the Pension Enhancement Plan. I had hoped that we could eliminate at least one of these two programs by the end of this contract. However, I can only speculate that the union negotiating team followed the demands of their union bosses and threatened the board with a strike. Here is my difficulty in summary. While about 90% of our teachers will be getting paid some pretty small raises over the next four years, about 10% of our highest-paid teachers will be getting, by any standard, some very large raises. We're laying off about 16 teachers tonight to balance our budget. My heart goes out to every one of these teachers and their families, and I will do whatever I can do to find a way to recall as many of these teachers as possible by the beginning of the new school year. The irony is, on the same night we're approving a contract that continues these two pension enhancement programs that will cost just the district, and I'm not talking about the pension plan, the teacher's retirement plan, I'm talking the Elmhurst School District 205, and the first year of the contract that will cost us $295,000. And by the last year of the contract, we'll be paying over $695,000 that year in these programs. Or stated in a different way, if our dire financial situation continues and we cannot find other cost savings or revenue enhancements, these pension enhancements will cost the equivalent of four and a half mid-year career teachers just in the first year of the contract and the equivalent of over 10 teachers in the final year of the contract. I ask myself if that will cost the community our elementary world language program or our music or art programs, and I certainly hope not. I make no judgment as to the worth of these programs. I'm simply pointing out that we can no longer afford them, not at the cost of teachers' jobs, not at the cost of larger class sizes, and not at the cost of sacrificing the riches of the curriculum that we offer our children. It's just not fair to our teachers, our children, or our community. I have to vote now.
Any other discussion?
Seeing none, Mrs. Walsh, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
No.
Mrs. Derone?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Five ayes, two nays. That motion carries. Back to our agenda, we will take the other items left from closed session at the appropriate time at the conclusion of the superintendent's agenda. This takes us to superintendent's communication, student fees. Mr. Prunow.
Yes, I just wanted to let the board know and the community and parents, one of the things, we are still in the process of evaluating student fees for next year. It is on the Financial Board Committee's agenda next week, but because of that and no determination has been made on student fees, we were going to delay the InfoSnap info registration process for a few weeks. We usually have this in Elmhurst starting this time of the year in this timeframe, but we would like to link registration with all the student fees and make sure parents understand what student fees they're going to have. And until that's determined, I would prefer to wait and do that all at once. So I just want to let the board know, we'll be delaying that for a couple of weeks until we come back with a recommendation to the board on student fees for next year, and then we will put InfoSnap out and have parents start to register.
Next item is the discussion of the parameters resolution related to bond refunding. Mr. Prunow.
Yeah, let me turn this over to Chris Welton. This was discussed in the Board Finance Committee, and we think this is of great benefit to the taxpayers of Elmhurst. And Mr. Welton can go through this resolution and the details.
Well, actually, we have Nora Joyce here from William Blair to go over a very brief PowerPoint presentation on the refunding bond issue.
It says Elizabeth Hennessy would be here tonight, but she's actually out of town, so happy to stand in for her. Nora Joyce from William Blair. And I'll just begin by talking a little bit about the interest rate market. This is a trend line for the past five years for tax-exempt interest rates for 10-year AAA tax-exempt rates and 20-year AAA tax-exempt rates. The green line is the 10-year line and the blue line is the 20-year line. And we're over on the far right-hand side of the graph. Interest rates really hit an all-time low in January of this year and have trended up slightly, but as you can see, are really at historic low-average rates presently. The next page is another graph that also shows interest rates over the past seven years for 1 through 30 years in terms of borrowing rates. Where we are presently is the light green line as of April 3, 2012. So over the yield curve, we're really, again, at historic lows. Okay, so I know you've seen some information to date. We're looking at opportunities to refinance bonds for savings, and one opportunity has presented itself, and that's an opportunity to refund the district's 2006 A bonds for savings. The new money portion of the Series 2006 bonds is approximately $40.77 million, which may be refunded in advance of the call date on the bonds. The total outstanding amount of the 2006 A bonds is $54.15 million. So all of the bonds are issued, when they were issued, had a call date of January 1, 2016. And a portion of the bonds was issued for new-money capital purposes and a portion of the bonds was issued for refunding purposes. That portion that was issued for refunding purposes is approximately 23%. That portion that was issued for refunding purposes is approximately 23% and is not eligible to be refunded in advance of the call date. Minimum savings target for refunding bonds, the industry standard is a present value savings percentage, and that is 3%. The savings right now on the refunding opportunity that we're talking about tonight is in excess of 3%. Refunding all of the bonds does not produce present value savings at this time. However, issuing less than $10 million in the present calendar year affords the district to issue bank-qualified status bonds, which provides the district with an opportunity to reduce borrowing rates at 10 basis points to 30 basis points lower than general market rates. So we've identified an opportunity to refund a portion of the 2006A bonds on a bank-qualified basis that does produce present value savings. The optimal process for issuing refunding bonds is to have the board approve a savings target and authorize a parameters refunding resolution. This allows optimal market timing and avoid having to call a meeting in a hurry. Board delegates are set forth in the bond resolution. Usually, the board president, finance chair, and assistant superintendent for business must review and approve the final pricing. So once the bond parameters resolution is passed, then the three board delegates work with William Blair to provide authority to market the bonds and to sell the bonds and to enter into contract for the refunding bonds. So in the next page, you may not be able to see this, oh, you can see it real, provides an update on the refunding opportunity. So the 2006A bonds that we've identified go out through January of 2026. The total bond debt service that would be refunded is $11.54 million, and the new bond debt service using interest rates as of April 4 is $11.1 million. So the savings is $394,000. This is based on interest rates as of April 4, 2012. The refunding has been sized at approximately $8 million. The bank-qualified allowance is based on a calendar year, so the district may not issue more than $10 million of tax-exempt debt in any given year. And knowing that the district may be entering into some capital leases in the present year, we've sized the refunding opportunity at $8 million, and $2 million of capital leases would be issued at a later date. So the present value savings on the bonds at the bottom is 4.94%. That is present value savings. It's taking the savings of $394,000, discounting that at the borrowing rate, so the present value of today's money is $328,000, and then the present value savings, a percentage of bonds being refunded, is 4.94%. In terms of, I just want to mention one other thing. Negative arbitrage is the difference between the borrowing rate, the new borrowing rate on the bonds, and the escrow rate, which is a rate of return in the escrow. The escrow will run through 2016, which is the call date, and that is also a factor in how much savings can be optimized on a refunding. So even though interest rates are very low, at, you know, say, 3% or 4%, the borrowing rate, which is an escrow rate of return, and uses state and local government securities or U.S. Treasury securities, is extremely low, as we all know and can tell in our investments and our checking account. So the negative arbitrage is $616,000. So one way we look at that, we say, okay, well, if we wait until closer to the call date, what's the benefit of doing so? So on the right-hand column bottom, the break-even analysis is interest rates would need to increase by more than 26 basis points between now and February 2013 to make the district better off selling refunding bonds now at current interest rates. So the interest rate risk really is if interest rates, you know, go up more than 26 basis We have been tracking this opportunity since February, and the gross savings as of February 3 was $746,000, and the present value savings was 7.8%. The present value savings currently is 4.94%. And I also want to mention that, as we've been tracking this, we did downsize the amount of the bond issue to 8 million instead of 10 million. So the gross savings, even though it's been going down slightly based on interest rates, also went down May 21 based on having to reduce the bond size from 10 million to 8 And that is it for the presentation.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much, by the way. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Joyce? Mr. Bloom?
What maturity structure of the refunding? Is it a, I see in here, is it a 10-year bullet, or?
It goes out to 2026, so we're actually just refunding one maturity presently that we've identified that is, you know, is one of the highest coupons of the district's outstanding bonds the district has. The 2006A bonds, 5.25% is the coupon rate, and we're refunding the longest maturity of that loan.
Okay. And then, secondly, today, the tenure closed at 198, I think, which is back in the range of the March 1 kind of numbers that we wrote, I mean, looking at a chart there, I mean, materially different than April 4, I think. I mean, I guess it would be helpful to have an update.
Well, the municipal market is a little bit, has one-day lag in terms of pricing data that comes out. So based on today's data, the MMD and the municipal market data comes out tomorrow, so I don't have an update based on today's activity, would have one based on tomorrow. But typically, when treasuries go up and down, municipal rates don't always go lockstep. They follow the same trend line, but they may not, you know, move in lockstep as the treasury rate. So unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you on exactly what happened in the market.
I mean, I guess the point is, we started looking at this earlier, we had a window, the window closed on us, and it looks like, you know, bonds are rallying again, rates are coming down again. The window, we seem to be getting inside the edge of that window where we wish we would have been two weeks ago, or three weeks ago when we were looking at this, so.
Right. Well, generally, let me just say something. The bond parameters resolution is good for six months, and we'll monitor the market. Typically, it takes, you know, based on authorization, it takes three to four weeks to close a bond issue, but at three weeks, two and a half to three weeks to sell bonds. So based on, you know, today's authority, I think that the earliest we'd probably be in the market is two, two and a half weeks. And I know Chris has been in touch with Elizabeth, so I don't know exactly what the calendar is. We, you know, typically, I mean, there's been so many things going on in the market, but typically, what we have seen as a trend in the municipal market is, once the tax deadline approaches, April 15, a lot of demand is reduced, and therefore, interest rates tend to go up in the municipal market. And then after the April 15 deadline passes, then demand starts to increase and more, you know, money comes into the market. So hopeful or hoping that even though interest rates did spike, you know, in the springtime, that they will decline, but, you know, there's just so much variability and uncertainty in the market right now.
Sure. One last technical question. In the bond provision, it says optional prepayment at any point in time no later than 2023? So these are optional call?
So the new bonds will be issued with a 10-year par call, and I have the number.
Was that said wrong in the resolution, or am I just reading it wrong? It said, should be called no later than, I'm trying to find this here, let's see here. All our portion of the bonds may be called on a date specified in the notification, but not later than January 1, 2023, and on any date thereafter. Was that supposed to be not earlier?
So this is the new, this is the optional call for the new bond issue?
For the new bond issue.
So when these bonds are issued, because these go out to 2026, we're issuing them in 2012, the optional call will be 2022. So these bonds will have another, you know, optional or opportunity to call the bonds 10 years from now. So we're talking about 2016 is the call date. Those are the bonds that the district is presently paying on, and those are the bonds that we're going to refund.
Sure, I understand. I just wasn't sure whether this language was correct. And then the question that I had was, is if indeed these were callable, you know, does a no-call provide material savings?
That's a good question, and, you know, based on the market, a 10-year call is You know, it's something that we can look at and will follow up.
Sure.
But that's, yes, there is a difference between callable and non-callable in terms of cost. So I'll make that note.
Any other questions? Mr. McDonough?
Thank you. I don't really have a question so much as I would just like to let people know that the leadership on the Finance Committee, watching Mr. Collins, Mr. Bloom, you saw an example with the detailed questions, and Mr. Welton as well. I think the taxpayers of District 205 should be very grateful. They've recognized an opportunity, they've pushed it in this level of detail, and the benefit here is that the taxpayers benefit from this. This reduces a tax levy, is that right? It does not generate money for the district. It reduces the tax bill, and I think the taxpayers should be grateful for the leadership that's shown and the level of sophistication that's being brought to the board and to the administration, and I'm grateful.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to know, who sits in your office with the crystal ball, looking at interest rates, deciding when to pull the plug, you know? I mean, had we gone out two weeks ago, we'd been a much worse case than we are now, again, and, you know, how do we know it's not going to go lower? How do you decide?
I think really the best thing you can do is just set forth a plan for sale based on adequate marketing of the bond issue and obviously an appropriate savings target that the district wants to achieve. And as we move closer, you know, our underwriting desk and our trading desk has better feel for what might be an appropriate day to market and sell the bonds. We also look at other supply in the market, if there are large bond issues coming forward, the state of Illinois, or, you know, various events that we anticipate. We want to maybe get in the market in advance of that or, you know, later than that. But generally, we don't like to try and time the market, and, you know, we don't say, let's wait six months and, you know, maybe interest rates will be better. No one wants to be in that business. There are many people who are in the business, but we try to avoid doing that and just try to put together the best plan for our clients.
Anyone else? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Rooney, if I can help answer your question. I work for a competing investment bank. I'm a managing director in a high-grade taxable corporate bond business is my specialty, so I do get a front-row seat to this every day. And there is no crystal ball. In fact, if we had a great crystal ball, I wouldn't know any of you people because I would be on a beach somewhere. But, I mean, you can take the best economic news that comes across the tape every day, you can take the best estimates from the leading economists in the market, and the consensus is that they think interest rates are going higher. Now, you cannot predict day-to-day volatility, and you're right. In January, and I'll use the 10-year treasury as a proxy for all this, since that's what I stare at every day, interest rates are, the return on the, or the yield on the 10-year treasury was about 1.8%. It then rose to about 2.4%, and now it's back roughly to 2%. So at 2.4%, as you see in William Blair's calculations, that the break-even point is just 26 basis points. Well, just three weeks ago, we were far above that, and we were essentially out of the money. Now we're back in the money. I think what we're doing here that is prudent is that we have $40 million worth of debt that is possible to refinance, and because we don't have the crystal ball, we're only refunding $8 million this year. We can then take a look at next year to refund some more, depending upon what interest rates look like, what our break-even looks like, and how much money we can save. I mean, the problem here is that whenever, whatever day we pick, unless we are lottery winner-like and pick the low in interest rates for a generation, which I would bet against our ability to do that, somebody can always Monday morning quarterback us. However, right now, the window is open to prudently refinance 8 million of our 40 million, save the taxpayer, you know, the better part of $400,000. And I think we would be prudent to save the taxpayer that money, remain vigilant, and continue to watch interest rates and our opportunity to refinance our debt as the market provides opportunities.
Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate the presentation and the understanding. It's a complicated issue, and I think it's something that we, well, we'll be voting on it later, but certainly I want to do for the taxpayers, so appreciate your coming. This is strictly speaking a workshop meeting, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on the issue that we've just talked about, the bond refunding, you're welcome to do at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's, no, Board Committee report, sorry. We have two committees to hear from tonight. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee is first. Ms. Ebner?
The Curriculum and Instruction Board Committee met on April 4 last week, and we discussed three topics. The first one was the technology plan, and Dave Smith presented or reviewed the technology plan for 2012 to 2015. So we talked about our future for technology for our students in this district. Dave Smith has done a lot of research review and his team. His technology plan also looked at district achievement data. They have received a lot of teacher input. There's been teacher focus groups, there's been teacher surveys centered around technology. So there's a lot of data that has come in about technology of where we are now and where we want to go for technology. So we talked about the current status of our technology, and then we briefly reviewed six conclusions as we moved forward to 2015, and we talked about increasing the number of student devices, possibly a one-to-one ratio by 2015 of student to electronic device. In order to reach a goal like that, we need to budget for digital curriculum development. There needs to be principal leadership and training around technology. There need to be more professional development and instructional support for teachers, and we would have to make investments into our district infrastructure to support the increase in the number of devices. So we'll need to prioritize in the curriculum and technology departments the prioritized funds to support increases in student devices. We also talked about professional learning communities and professional learning teams. Charles Johns provided professional learning team trackers that I like, that monitors activities for teams of teachers, and this is very important to our committee. Teams of teachers allows teachers to collaborate to improve their classroom practice, so this is a high priority for the board. And we talked about different types of teams. There are grade-level teams at each school, that would be called a horizontal team. There are vertical teams of different grade levels, fifth and sixth grade teachers, for example. So we talked about how teachers will collaborate and... So we talked about how teachers will collaborate and how they monitor their progress. So Charles Johns has done a nice job of creating trackers to share progress with principals in the curriculum team and help teachers work together very efficiently. The third topic we talked about was the summer curriculum work. And this is work that will be done for the, after the kids get out of school. This will be two weeks in June, and it's a long list of work on curriculum assessments. You know, maybe you wanted to say a word or, you know, a sentence or two about that important work that will go on in June.
Well, as you said, we have two weeks in June where it's a very active effort to make sure that we're updating our curriculum, continuing our work to aligning to standards, updating our common assessments, and putting together formative assessments as well. So it's all part of our process to work to a system that is well-organized and aligned and provides the data we need for continual improvement. So it's going to be a very busy two weeks. I've, to be honest, I've lost track of how many different projects we have gone on, probably well over 30 at this point.
And the last thing I wanted to say is, at our next Curriculum Committee meeting, we will be discussing the REACH program.
Mr. Collins?
Just to add one thing, that even though I may not have come across, in my three years on the Board of Education, I have not attended a more exciting meeting than that Curriculum and Instruction meeting. Because we talked about what I joined the Board to do. I mean, I'm happy to serve on the Finance Committee and try to keep the balance budget, the budget balanced and refinance a little debt now and then. But I joined the Board of Education to improve the quality of education for the kids in this district. And in that meeting, Dr. Johns laid out his plan for the implementation of professional learning communities and to vastly enhance the level of learning, the level of teaching that goes on in this district. And I just think that at some point in the near future, the whole Board should hear what you have to say and what your plan is. Because that's what we're all here for. That was truly the most exciting thing I had heard because I think your plan is brilliant and I am truly the most optimistic I have ever been for the future of this school district.
Ms. Hirsch.
I don't know if it was the most exciting meeting I've ever been to since I've been on the Board with you for three years, but it was a pretty good one. The thing that I enjoyed about the discussion that we had is it's a development process. It's not that if you put this button here and if you put this pushpin here, you're going to have the answer. It is about professional development and embracing professional development for these teams so that we can improve our teacher's skills, we can move to the place where we're providing just-in-time professional development to address teachers' gaps, possibly students' gaps. So the model, I think, is what was so exciting, and I think the fact that it was joined with the conversation about the tech plan and talking about how instruction has changed and is, we're in the process of changing instruction from being expert standing in the front of the room of rows and columns of students madly writing down everything that their teacher says. I think the collaborative nature that we're trying to move to, I think there's a meshing of the technology, the collaborative nature of how education's going to be delivered, of how we're tracking our professional teams and how they are building their skills. I think that's, those are important initiatives that we've been trying to focus on and to focus all of our staff on. So I think those were very promising. I think, Ms. Ebner, I think one of the things that we talked about, and maybe you can tell me if you concur, when we talked about the technology plan, there are significant investments that we would need to make. And I think you kind of outlined the infrastructure, the, you know, but the devices themselves. And we kind of had a discussion around curriculum and what curriculum's going to look like in five years. And are kids going to have the backpacks that weigh 75 pounds with the textbooks that are this thick? Or are we going to be to a point where we're looking at a tablet-type device? And we don't have the answers yet. But I think one of the conclusions that we might have come to was that this is a, an item that should be considered by Finance. This should be one of our capital projects. This is not something that we would be able to expect to carve out of the technology budget over the next five years. This would be a significant investment in our infrastructure as well as the resources that we use to instruct our kids. So I think maybe just taking it maybe one step further was that this would be considered something that would go on. Our 10-year facilities plan that I know is being reviewed by the Finance Committee and looking at technology as one of our infrastructure capital projects that is going to need to be added to the list of things that we need to invest in. You know, I'd ask my fellow Board members if they would agree with that. I'm giving it to the Finance Committee to add to the list.
Mr. Collins?
Ms. Hirsch, I would agree with that. And I also stand by my comment that that was the most exciting meeting I've attended. And I again urge Dr. Johns and Mr. Purno to let the rest of the Board in on that discussion, and then we can vote as to if that is the most exciting thing you've heard or not.
Any other discussion on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee? Ms. Stufen, you're up with the Board Improvement Policy Committee.
We finally were able to focus on Board Improvement, Community Relations, instead of the myriad policies, which was a little bit refreshing. So I'll begin the update on policy. And we agreed on our committee policy that'll be coming forward to the Board, the full Board, for a first reading. Please note, though, that there was some discussion that we may look at some, you know, committee norms that will, that's not part of policy, but that's something that we'll work on after the policy is approved by the full Board. So as we moved into the Board Improvement and Community Relations topics, we first hit on DPIs. First, with respect to the Community Relations, and thank you, Malia, for putting together a great list of district performance indicators from a Community Relations perspective. We did add a performance indicator, which is awareness and effectiveness of budget at a glance. You know, so as you see the Community Relations DPIs, we are going to add that. I know that it's something that is very valuable for us to communicate to the, our community, our employees, really what the true financial picture is, what all the pieces of it are, to help us get a better handle as to how we have to juggle all of the very important investments that we make from a budgetary standpoint. And so it's important for us to measure, since that's a new publication, of how effective are people, you know, aware of it, and those sorts of things. So that was one thing that was very important for us to add to the Community Relations DPIs. Then we moved into Board Governance. I know that we do our, you know, annual self-evaluation, which we will have, you know, DPIs with respect to that. But really what we wanted to focus on is the Board Governance work as it relates to representing education for the community. And I know that at some point in the Performance Management Committee, we're talking about overall district DPIs. There's a little bit of overlap in this, in this committee. And that is from, when you look at a district-wide survey, you do ask questions about Board Governance and how well are we communicating with the community and, you know, doing our Governance work. So some of those survey questions, we will bring out of that survey and look at it from our Board perspective, and those are our DPIs. So I thought that that was really important. The other main component of a Board Governance DPI is transparency. We want to be transparent, and one way that we can measure that is, I know the Illinois Policy Institute has a local transparency project and a grading, rubric rating. And I know that DuPage County was evaluated, and we got some results of that and have made already significant improvement. But we can use that instrument to rate how transparent we are. So it's not us looking at ourselves as transparent, but an outside, you know, entity evaluating us, you know, with other governmental entities and comparing to see how transparent we are. I think that's a real DPI that we should look at. So that's what the Committee is proposing. Then we moved into the Board Self-Assessment. I know that we've already approved the survey, but really what we did was we looked at the next step of it. And that is not just taking the survey, but what are the results and how we formulate a retreat so that we can get some valuable, honest, deep discussion about how we are governing. And so we talked about the retreat, and so more information will follow. Just so that everyone understands, you know, there's two pieces to the retreat that you will hear about. One, from the Board Improvement, Policy, and Community Relations Group, from a Board Self-Evaluation standpoint and the committee structure. And then there's another segment of it, which will come out of Performance Management Committee with respect to the overall district DPIs. Just to kind of throw that bigger-picture realm out there. We also talked about Board Open Houses. We really want to connect with the community. And we've, I know that we initially, when the Board got together last year, we talked about adding maybe another community forum in the spring. And, you know, we talked about a lot of different ways to reach out to the community. And there are many ways. One of which we would like to, you know, propose to the Board is that we segment sometime before our Board meetings, that everybody knows, you know, they go on typically twice a month. And that we, as a Board, would be available to the community to do Q and A with the community before the Board meetings. So we would really like to set that precedent because what we want to do is make sure, I mean, we know that the community is out there. We know that they come to the Board meetings, and we could just, you know, utilize that scheduled time. So we are going to propose and try to work around, I know that we've had closed sessions before Board meetings, but we're, we would like to propose and try to work around the June 12th Board meeting where we can begin this process and at least put a stake in the ground and start the process, see how it's going, and then we can roll it out further. So that was a big, you know, specific item that we would like to move forward with. Lastly, we talked about legislation. I mean, there's so much going on with legislation that impacts us. You know, instead of having it one-way, we talked about it being two-way. So one, one idea that the Committee was talking about is how do we get our legislators talking to us in our community, talking to us as Board members? So one proposal is that we ask our legislative representatives that represent us in our community to present to us at a Board meeting what's going on, what's upcoming pending legislation, and what's the impact to the community. So that's my update for the Committee.
Any questions with the Policy Board Improvement Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. There are five items on the Consent Agenda. The Personnel Report, the Approval of Budget Reductions, the Approval of Two Foreign Exchange Students, and the Approval of the Amended 2011-2012 School Calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item for discussion? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Ms. Hirsch.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda as presented, including Items A through E.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins to approve the Consent Agenda. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays that motion carries. We have a couple of action items. Is there a motion for the first one? Both of them are involving the refunding presentation that we heard earlier. Mr. Collins?
I move that we approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $10 million of general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2012.
Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. McDonough to approve, it doesn't even use the words parameters resolution. Interesting. Okay. To approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $10 million general obligation refunding school bonds. Is there any discussion? Mr. Collins?
I just want to reiterate that I think this is a prudent thing to do. As Mr. McDonough pointed out, it saves our taxpayers' money. And we always have to keep a vigilant eye to save our taxpayers' money. And also, I just wanted to thank Mr. Welton. He has provided in, throughout our Finance Committee meetings. He's a problem solver. He's proposed many solutions to the problems that we presented and tried to solve. And he is the person that kept in close touch with William Blair, monitoring the market, and came to us and brought this to our attention. And I just want to say thank you.
Mr. McDonough, do you have a comment?
It was just a procedural question that, should we just consider the two items together, the resolution authorizing, directing, the execution of the escrow agreement at the same time since it's the same subject matter?
I expect, since they're two 50-page documents, the attorneys would like us to do them separately.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Just to be clear, in layman's terms for the public, what we are doing is preparing to authorize William Blair in conjunction with the Board President, the Finance Chair, and our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Finance, and Operations to, what we're going to do is prepare a resolution that will allow those entities to observe carefully the right time in the market that would be best for us, looking at all of the different things Ms. Joyce talked about, that would be best for us to float new bonds at a much lower interest rate than the one that we originally had to use, thereby saving taxpayers' money. The rest of the complication is in the details, but that's the bottom line of what we're doing for the taxpayers. Ms. Stufen?
And I know that it might be a new precedent for us as a Board in District 205 in Elmhurst, but this is, I'm not going to call it common practice, but there are other school districts, you know, that are, that do this. So it's not new, you know, new pieces. And as Ms. Droni has indicated, it has to be approved by, you know, many different people in order to execute it. But this is in preparation that we can, you know, make that decision and move on it without, you know, months' preparation, and we lose the window.
And in fact, it is not new to District 205. We have done this similar thing in the past at other times. Ms. Ebner?
I just wanted to make one comment. If we have this parameter resolution, and if we in fact do not refund, if the interest rates aren't right and so forth, the different variables, if we do not execute, then we are not responsible for any fees. So that's another positive for this, for this transaction.
Any other discussion? Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh, always, really. Please call the roll.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no?
Seven ayes, no nays that motion carries. And the second resolution getting this refunding underway? A motion? Ms. Ebner?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2012.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hirsch. Moved by Ms. Ebner to... Move by Ms. Ebner to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, basically setting up the account where we're going to put the money from the new bond issue until the call date. Is there any discussion? I just had one question. The rationale talks about the escrow account being with U.S. Bank Corporate Trust Services, whereas the resolution talks about the escrow account being at the Bank of New York Mellon Trust. I talked with you, Mr. Welton, about it, and that is in fact, it's all, it's gonna be, could you clarify that for us?
Yes, the, the rationale did not have the right bank. It is the New York Mellon Bank.
Just in case anyone, any bankers out there looking at the rationale and looking at the bank, that's not the right one, it is the New York Mellon Bank. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll on the second resolution?
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays that motion carries. That concludes the Superintendent's Agenda. We have upcoming committee meetings, the Performance Management Committee on April 12th, Finance and Operations on April 18th, the Board Improvement Policy Committee meeting on April 25th, and a Curriculum and Instruction meeting on May 2nd. We have our regular business and reorganization meeting on April 24th, and our workshop meeting the first, or the second Tuesday in May, May 8th. We have two items left out of closed session still to be acted on. Is there a motion, please? Ms. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal to non-tenured teachers other than final-year probationary teachers.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ebner. Is there any discussion? Mr. Purno, could you maybe just give us a quick summary of what this action is? Or Mr. Hellmaner?
Mr. Hellman, you wanna explain this to the poll?
In this particular case, we are looking at our staffing levels and are ensuring that we will not have more for, more workforce or more teachers available than what would be necessary in order to staff at the levels that we have looked at based on budgetary recommendations.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. The last action is second half of the same. Is there a motion, please? Ms. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
Moved by Ms. Hirsch to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Stufen. Is there any discussion? Same rationale. Unfortunately, no one's happy having to do this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Next item is Board Communications. Does anyone have anything they wish to share with the board this evening? Ms. Hirsch.
I received a memo as, one of my duties is to act as a delegate for this board to the IASB. And so I received a memorandum requesting that if Boards of Education would choose to put together or modify resolutions relating to what IASB position statements are. This is the Illinois Association of School Boards. So this is the organization that supports school boards across the entire state. If it is the desire of this board to put forth any resolutions or modify any of the existing resolutions, our deadline is June 30. So if anyone has any interest in looking at these or working on these, just let me
Any other Board Communications? Anything else?
That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.